The Borough of Yaden, Delaware County, Pennsylvania Borough Council Legislative Meeting, February 16, 2023, is now called to orders. If you please stand for the Plaid of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Dotson.
Good evening. Mayor Rowan K. Heppkins, please.
President.
President Sharon, Council Harris.
President.
Vice President, Erin Johnson.
President.
Counselor Talia Jones-Waters.
President.
Counselor Carlet Brooks.
President.
Counselor Nicole Beadie.
President.
Counselor Latoya Monroe. Absent. Counsel Leanna Roker.
Here.
Thank you. Representative from Mr. Mark Munch's office, please.
President.
Thank you. Our Finance Director, Mr. Nafis Nichols. Our Tax Collector, Mr. Londa Hughes. And our Engineer, Mr. Joe Vercuso.
President.
Thank you, sir.
Citizens.
Yes.
Agenda items only. Comment limited to three minutes. Mr. Michael Trent.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
One of the things I put down, I wanted to look at was the accounts payable. There's a few things, but one that caught my eyes naturally was being paid to the legal teams around here. I think, you know, between the two was like $15,000. And I think a lot of that goes back to some of these special meetings that we're having. And, you know, it's like all we're doing is making the lawyers a lot richer. We need to cut down on all these special meetings, especially some of the ones that have been approved and aren't even listed on the website. I noticed tonight there's seven meetings, including three special meetings. So, you know, why do we keep having all these special meetings? I don't think they're that necessary. Okay, I know I'll give responses. But anyway, another thing is our public safety, which, you know, relates to our police staff. And, you know, what is said and what's true varies a lot. I mean, I noticed in a Tribune article, Madam President mentioned that we only need like 12 full-time officers and 10 part-timers, although you haven't even tried to hire any part-timers at this point, and we can't hire any full-time because we still haven't had a Civil Service Commission that's functioning. I know a lot of people, including myself, have put in to be on that. I applied over three months ago. So I don't know what the delay is of why we can't have a Civil Service Commission operative because it's going to take probably about another four to six months after that process starts before we can actually have any full-time police officers. So really, in the long run, all you're doing is making us an unsafe environment. And then recently it seems like there's been misuse of our police officers. I noticed that, I think it was last week, that somebody was trying to take, you know, video of a meeting, and next thing you know, the police were called on her. And that was two officers that came in for something that, to me, is like, you know, not really in the line of duty of what they should be performing. I think they even mentioned that there were like three or four activities that they could be doing instead of coming up here for something that, you know, irrelevant, really. It's not like that's something significant to chastise somebody for trying to film something. Another situation, which I don't know if they were on duty or they were paid overtime, when it was the one event on a Saturday, the culture event, and I saw three police officers. I'm sure three police officers weren't on duty to, you know, be at that function.
Mr. Trent, do it.
I understand. I know. Y'all don't want to hear what I'm saying.
Mr. Trent.
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to answer that question as it relates to the multicultural event. Those officers were visiting. They were not paid to be at the multicultural event. They were on duty.
They were invited to visit?
No, they were not.
They just had to show up?
That's right.
It's hard to believe.
Oh, well, it's hard to believe for you, but that's what happened. That's the facts.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Ronald Green.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to try to make this short. I never went up here. First, I'm going to say this right now. Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at you. When there's a fire up there, you're the chief. You never put out the fire. In other words, you are the mayor. And when they're up there fussing, you need to take their mayor hat off and put your reverend hat on. That's it. The next thing, we need that camera up here. Somebody's going to get hit or killed. I'm out there. I'm tired of coming here. I've been coming here since August, talking about this camera. I want it up there. The next thing is the police. I got all these citations right here. This don't make no bit of sense. Almost $2,000 worth of citation. I called 911 this morning, asked them to have the cops come out there this morning and patrol Bailey Road 600. Did they come out? No, but they can come to my house. The other day, they came to my house again. The guy's right. I don't want to pay the citation. And this guy that comes to my house, I called the school. I had important stuff. I did not cuss. I did not threaten the secretary. They called the cops. That man came to my house and said he going to give me a citation. That was Tuesday. I'm tired of that, too. When you want them to come out there, they don't come out there. Where are they at? When they go out to the station, they go left to Bailey. When they come out to the other station, they go right. They never come down this end. I'm out there all the time. I'm salty with it. New police chief, I expect progress right away. I don't want to wait. We got a new police chief in. I want progress. And I'm tired of these police bother with Ronald Green. All right, all right. Is my time up yet?
No.
Code enforcement. You walk around here, and you walk, oh, my toe. All the payments are uneven. I've called about it. I have gone around, write down notes, give it to Mr., whatever his name is. Why is Yaden so dirty? Why don't we have the people clean up leaves? I went out the other day, wrote little notes, and the guys up there talking, are you Rodney? My name is not Rodney. But people don't like when you stepping on, I'm stepping on everybody's toes, even the school district. Y'all messing with the wrong person now. I mean, I want things done here. I've been a scoutmaster. I've known the reverend through scoutmaster, but what's going on up here that he's not doing, I cannot respect him. And the other thing is, how can you have a clean birth?
Mr. Green.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Green, your time is up.
You go down here, and you look across at that school.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anna?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
One major topic of concern last year was public safety, and I want to take a little bit of time to address that now. Residents watched last year while the police department was systematically dismantled. With the hiring of a new police chief, the hope is that this marks a turning point where council will begin valuing public safety and provide the police with the tools, equipment, and the capital upgrades to do their job. To that end, we need to understand what is being done with reestablishing the Civil Service Commission, without which we're not able to hire full-time police officers. We need a commitment that council will agree to actually hire full-time police officers. The Valori Group, who you put so much trust in, clearly indicated that the Borough—Sharon, can you please listen to me? —clearly indicated that the Borough needs 28 full-time officers. I would like to hear, before the night is through, a sincere commitment should focus on hiring full-time officers, not just part-time officers, and this should be one of the highest priorities for this Borough. We do need to focus on public safety, and we need full-time police officers. If you look around, all the other boroughs are actually putting out that they're hiring full-time officers. So we need to start focusing on this now. It's going to be hard for us to get the full-time officers because there is competition. Another topic that constantly speaks about is transparency. When I request transparency, I'm specifically speaking to council. Some people think that when I talk about transparency, I'm talking about a call-out to the police. I'm not. I'm talking about a call to council to be transparent in terms of expenditures, in terms of conducting a police chief search. There is absolutely no reason why the residents of this Borough are not being provided the names of the residents that participated in selecting the three final candidates for the police chief of police. There's also no reason why we were forced to file right-to-no requests to get that information. We are expecting the Civil Service Commission to be reconvened. We expect and are demanding transparency in how the additional candidate that's going to serve on that commission is selected. Outright refusing to consider any candidate that put their name in for consideration without a statute prohibiting them from being considered is wrong. A couple other things that I would like to say is, with regards to some of these other meetings, the Citizens Forum was just canceled. People have a lot of things on their plate. If people come here, it's because they have the serious concerns with regards to this community, and this is the only way that we can get our voices heard. So asking that you make sure that the Citizens Forum is conducted, there are also saying that there should be non-agenda items afterwards. In most cases, we never have the opportunity to have a conversation with regards to that. And the last things that I will end with is that I hope that we begin a new trajectory in 2023 where council will show a sincere concern for public safety, a true respect for the police, and that we work towards rebuilding what was previously what I consider to be, and I think several others, the most prestigious police force in our area. Thank you very much.
In the words of John Lewis, "If you see something that is not right, not fair, not just, you have a moral obligation to do something about it." And that is why these legislative chambers were packed last year, overflowing with our good and moral neighbors standing up and speaking out about the not right, not fair, and not just proceedings in these chambers. That is why good and moral neighbors keep coming to meetings to speak, to hold our elected public servants accountable to their pledge to serve our community. Reviewing the accounts payable list and the agenda, we see the usual questionable expenses as well as new ones. Reviewing the agenda, we see it is once again written in such a way as to prevent neighbors from being able to give informed and meaningful commentary before a vote is called. We see you intend to appoint someone to the Civil Service Commission vacancy, but you do not say who. I myself applied last October after no one else did. It is interesting that when I volunteer my free services to the community, that I get no reply. The reaction to my volunteering my services is that other people are privately solicited to apply. I applied because my community had a need and I was qualified to fulfill it. I also applied to prevent a repeat of the previous appointment. I assumed if no one applied, that Sharon would select a grandchild or someone else over whom she had influence to apply. Any counselor who has read all applications with an open mind will realize I actually am the most qualified applicant. I have paid attention to community policing from my very first welcome-to-the-neighborhood home invasion at age 12. Last year aside, the police department has come a long way over my four decades of paying attention in Yaden. If diversity is more than a talking point, I bring diversity. I would suggest that in addition to appointing someone to the Civil Service Commission and an alternate, because we can have two alternates, that a motion be called to advertise for the Civil Service Test for the purpose of hiring at least five full-time officers. There's no point in waiting another month for that. Finally, I would like to announce to the community that the Yaden Good Neighbors Group has reserved a meeting space at Borough Hall for the second Tuesday of each month. On the evening of Tuesday, March 14, we will have a Meet the Candidates question-and-answer session. We invite Talia, Leanna, Latoya, and all other candidates to join us. If anyone would like to submit questions for the candidates, reach out to me on Nextdoor. If you're not on Nextdoor, I guarantee you know someone who has my email address.
Erin Johnson.
Good evening. First, I want to address the calendar. I'm sure that everyone in here knows who Mayor Mosley is. She's been the mayor, the first black mayor of this borough, serving three terms as the first black mayor of this borough. That's not Mayor Mosley. So who's previewing this before it's sent out? I know I'm not going to get an answer, but I know it's not Sharon. She pays for it, but she's not previewing it. Whole lot of other mistakes in there, too. Somebody needs to preview before it goes out. As far as the agenda, I see that we didn't have a report from Library. We did not have a report from Community Affairs. We did not have a report from Ordinance and Zoning. I don't know what happened to Code. It's not here. We did not have a report from Fire Department, Emergency Management. Why is on this agenda for approval? There has been no committee meetings in 14 months. I want to thank Counselor Johnson for attempting to have one Wednesday. Yeah, I'm talking to you. To have one Wednesday. She didn't show up. No, she didn't show up. We were there.
People did.
She did not show up.
Y'all can't talk from the floor. I don't want to hear.
It was canceled.
It was canceled at the amen hour, 11 o'clock. I got an email at—tell me what time I got the email, and should I get my phone?
Doesn't matter. You got it.
You lie. Something was there. But I do appreciate the effort.
Evidently not.
It should be on the web. It's not there. It's not there. Then more than just who I called to tell that there was a meeting, it was canceled, but Roy Hunter was there. We had a very good meeting without you. From the people that I called, they were there. She was not there. Again, I appreciate the effort. I'm sure you'll do better. Also, it was supposed to be a code meeting. Carlet, this is not to browbeat you, but I had some things that I wanted to bring so that we don't have to go through this kind of a stuff in a meeting. We could do that in a smaller setting, and you guys can bring it to the floor. Can I give this to you? That's only just a few things.
Your time is up, Ms. Johnson.
I know it is. That's just a few things.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
And I promise you, I'm going to move.
Sir.
That's just a few things that I have. And if we have a meeting again, trust me, I will bring more.
Will the engineers report up? Mr. Vercuso.
Good evening. I only have two items on my report tonight. The first was that the—just putting this on the record—that the Borough was awarded an Arlie Grant. There were only a few issued in the area. And this would be for the traffic signal improvements at McDade and Church. This is a little complicated. The amount of the grant was $287,000. The Borough had already—just when I came on board, there was work by traffic planning and design to redesign that signal as part of the whole one-way effort.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Counselor, there's some back nerves coming from you guys over there.
So the traffic planning and design was hired to redesign that signal for it to be a one-way—as part of that whole one-way effort. So that work has already been designed and permitted by PennDOT. The problem is that it also has to be done in conjunction with the other grant on the TA Set-aside Grant. So we're working in conjunction with the TA Set-aside Grant and this Arlie Grant to get that work done. We're still waiting on PennDOT approval for the speed hump on the Westerly side of McDade. We had to resubmit the plans. This is a pilot program for the state and PennDOT for a special kind of speed hump that they want to do. So that plan was resubmitted to PennDOT as part of that. So we continue to work on that intersection so we can get this sort of facilitated and on a fast track. But working with PennDOT has been a little bit slow in terms of what they have in mind for that speed hump. As part of that, then, the second part of my report is that we'd like to proceed with the road program, and this will require council's approval. So working with Mike P., Mike Pazola, there are five roads on the road program. One is West Cops Creek Parkway from McDade to Chester, Yaden Avenue, Redwood to Cedar, Pleasant Road, Darnell to Parmley, Rundell Avenue. There's a trench crossing at Bell Avenue that needs to be repaired, and the speed hump that we just discussed, in addition to a second speed hump that will be placed on McDade on the Easterly side of the intersection. And the estimated amount of that work is $90,000. I assume that that money will come—working with Mr. Nichols, that money will—a portion of that money will come from your liquid fuels monies. And if council is so inclined to proceed with this work, then we would put it out to bid and with the hopes of coming back at your March meeting to approve the low bidder on that project. So that would take council's approval tonight if council wants to proceed with that. Now, if you remember, this has gone back almost a year. We couldn't get it done last year in time to meet the PennDOT approval process by October. So we're way early this year to get this done. So.
Okay. I'd like to entertain the motion, but I'd like you to state the motion as you need it to be.
So the motion would be to approve the soliciting bids for the road program for the roads that I just mentioned, with the estimated cost to be $90,000.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Are there any further questions?
I have questions. So the McDade and Chester Avenue Road, it's not on here?
These were the roads that I got from Mike Pazola. So yes, it's not on there.
So why isn't that on there? I mean, we've been waiting for that road to be repaired for years now, and I was under the impression that that road was scheduled to be repaired.
This would be McDade from which portion of—
West Cops Creek.
West Cops—
West Cops Creek.
West Cops Creek is on here.
Chester.
West Cops Creek is on here. West Cops—West Cops Creek from McDade to Chester is on the list.
Are there any other questions?
Okay, so it is on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me, Ms. Vercuso. Can you restate? I have West Cops Creek. What are the other four?
Yaden Avenue, Redwood to Cedar, Pleasant Road, Darnell to Parmley, Rundell Avenue, that's just a trench crossing at Bell Avenue, and then the two speed humps, one west of the intersection—on McDade, one west of the intersection and one east of the intersection.
Are they on the 1000 block or the 900 block?
I don't know the block numbers. All I know is the one that we're putting—the one that we're putting—again, this is all part of taking the speed down at that intersection, right? So one is—
The 900 block would be where Mrs. Williams' property is, that she keeps—we—cars keep running into her property.
Yeah, so one is there.
The other one was on the opposite side of the street.
Right. One is there, and one is on the other side of—
So 9 and 1000 block on McDade. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have another question. So when you say repair, are you—the repairs going to include a complete resurface, a digging up, and—
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It'll be milled—the surface will be milled and then resurfaced. Yes.
Okay. Here are no further questions. Would you indicate by raising your hand—all in favor, would you indicate by raising your hand? The vote is unanimous. The motion carries.
Okay. And that's the end of my report unless there are any other questions.
Could you just recap just the total grant amount?
Yeah, right now, with that grant that I just read tonight, the Borough has just a little bit north of $4 million in grants for work to be done in various areas of the Borough.
I just want to make one other observation. We had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Vercuso earlier, the latter part of last month, and there are six major projects since he's been our Borough Engineer for the past year. Summarize those six projects in that meeting. And also, Mr. Vercuso gave us a very, very strong admonition to the state and condition of the underground—the underground infrastructure. Many, many, many sewer systems throughout this Borough, over 100 years old, are in desperate need of repair. So as we move forward with Mr. Vercuso, we will be addressing those and putting top priority on those conditions that he's recommending that we take very, very serious consideration of. Outside, thank you very much, Mr. Vercuso.
Yeah, and as I did tonight with the road program, in subsequent months, I'll be coming for council approval for each and every one of those projects as they move forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vercuso. You may also be excused.
Thank you.
I would like to be recognized.
Yes, Counselor.
I would like to make a motion to amend—the agenda to include the termination services of Joel Avery.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Are there any questions?
I do have a question. Is Mr. Avery responsible for this calendar?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Dotson, would you answer that question, please?
Mr. Avery didn't do the calendar. In fact, I'll take full responsibility to the calendar that got to me. I thought it was the lead on it. I did not approve it, but I'll take full responsibility. When I talked with the editor, that was supposed to be a fun fact in Yaden is that the first African-American mayor was. That wording was missing. The names of the vice president and the Supreme Court Justice was also supposed to be in their photographs. I will also say I won't apologize that I raised $12,000 on one week myself, and it didn't cost the taxpayers a nickel for that calendar, but I will apologize to all the mistakes in it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Nichols. And I do appreciate you taking responsibility for saying. However, it still remains that this calendar is an embarrassment because throughout this calendar is a lot of mistakes, number one. And number two, specifically, I see we're promoting Jacksonville Public Library.
Again, Counselor, I didn't approve the fundraising of the calendar, but I will take full responsibility.
So, thank you.
I don't know the budget, but I did not. But I was the lead on it. So as the lead, as a leader, I will take full responsibility.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. So we're not paying for that? That's what you're saying?
We raised money for it. The Borough didn't pay it out of its general fund, no.
So—
We gave it credit back, yes. So there's access money based off of fundraising efforts of $12,000.
So will you be seeking some sort of reimbursement because of the lack of integrity of that calendar?
We have a credit for next year's calendar.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So Mr. Avery, he's responsible for our website still?
That's a Mr. Dotson question. I don't—
Okay.
The question is, yes.
Okay.
A gentleman by the name of John— A gentleman by the name of John, are responsible for our website?
Okay, well, here's my problem with that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor with regards to.
Well, I'm still in the questions, I'm still asking questions. So here's my problem, the problem is simple. February 1st was the first day of Black History Month and our website has yet to recognize that. That's disgraceful, that's number one. Number two, Mr. Avery has done absolutely nothing deserving the $4,500 every month for the past 13, 14 months that he's been getting. It's atrocious. And we need to stop playing around with taxpayers' monies. We could put those monies to something else that will absolutely benefit us.
I'm going to weigh in on the, on the conversation with regards to Mr. Avery. Mr. Avery was hired to be the public relations specialist for the Borough of Yaden, January 2023. He is, excuse me, 22. He came to this, he was invited to serve the interests of the borough before any major decisions were made from this council. Because the reputation of the Borough of Yaden has been marred time and time again by local infighting with politicians and et cetera. It's just a, it's just the culture of this, of this particular.
Was already.
Excuse me, councillor.
Before we were even sworn in, you were speaking, having conversations with Joel Avery.
Councillor.
You were already dealing with Joel Avery before we were even sworn in.
Councillor, I'll get, councillor, I'll give you permission to speak. I am speaking now, you may have your, you may, you may speak after I'm finished. The image of this community, the suburban community, the bedroom communit-, community of Philadelphia that has a rich heritage, diversity, tree-lined, tree-lined streets, low crime, good public service, was the image that Mr. Avery was to, was the image that Mr. Avery was to promote in this town. Mr. Avery has the credentials of a journalist for the past 20 years. Mr. Avery, at the discharge of our former police chief, we hit a firestorm of allegations of racism for the four predominant council members that voted not to renew that contract.
And you deserved it.
And, and the, and this council were thrown into national media condemning four African-American women who hired Mr., the former chief. And Mr. Avery provided editorial recommendations. He provided the gathering of information that were facts to give to the media, national media, local media. And so Mr. Avery has done his job. In addition to that, he worked hand in hand with Mr. Corr prior, before he.
Please, please, ladies and gentlemen.
So I'm, I'm giving this input, I'm, I'm giving, excuse me, I'm giving this input because he has fulfilled his responsibility as a public, as a public relations. And it, and it has not just been for my, excuse me, councillor. He is the public relations vendor for this borough. And this motion that you have, he is under contract for this borough through the end of this year.
No, he is not, now he's not.
We have enough lawsuits pending against this borough. Joel Avery should not be, should not be another. And so I am, I am simply setting the record straight with regards to Mr. Avery. That's what I, that's what I'm doing. Both councillor Jones Waters, councillor Johnson, councillor Brooks, and, and all of you were given, every councillor on this, on this council was given the contact information when this gentleman was hired. You had every opportunity to, to, to call him, to talk to him. There is no secret. You have a list, you have a copy of his contract. All of that has been provided to you.
It's an agreement, not a contract.
And so, and so I just want to go on the record for, for what that is.
He has not been doing, serving the duties that he was hired to do. He did not. The website has not been appropriate since January 2022. He has not done anything other than serve you specifically. I have never seen an article with promoting.
Yeah, we don't even have trees anymore. You had them all cut down.
You can have the floor after councillor, after councillor.
Well, this is what my statement was. In regard to Joel Avery, first of all, we never agreed as a council to hire Joel Avery in the first place. He was just kind of thrust upon us. We never voted to hire this gentleman.
We did vote.
Well, if we did, I don't remember, I don't remember voting for him. We may have, but this is where we are now. You're saying that he did all of these things to support the borough. The things that you mentioned have nothing to do with the general public and their interests. It goes back to what Ms. Roe Cloud said. It is to serve whatever you felt as though you wanted to put out there in the community for your benefit. That has nothing to do with the residents, that has nothing to do with the rest of the people on council. Joel Avery has never come to us as other, the other three councillors asking us to provide anything for him, to put in a newsletter, to do anything. So he's not serving the community, he's serving your interests. And if he's done that and he's gotten paid to do that, we need to move on. He's not doing his job. He submits the same invoice month after month, identical. Nobody submits an identical invoice every month to provide a service. He's not doing the same thing every month. And he needs to, he never comes to any meetings, he doesn't present any reports, none of that. And no, I'm not chasing that man down and asking him anything. He needs to come to the council meetings and he needs to make his, if he's doing all this work, he should be providing some type of report to the council. That's about it, I'm not calling him.
Councillor Beadie, I will, I will respond to you. I have asked Mr. Avery to provide written reports and to go back even historically and provide those reports to you along with the, as in addition to those invoices. I have just recently asked him to do that so that you get a, get a picture of what he has been doing. And it's not just for me. I happen to be sitting in this chair, I happen to be the target for many, many, many news situations and wanting the answer from the president of council, what in the world is going on in Yaden with the constant acrimony, the constant attacks, the constant disruptions? That has been the question. And when you have controversial issues, where we are sued, where we're in litigation that we could not answer, Mr. Avery has to formulate to the mass media, the Enquirer, the Daily Times, WHYY. All of those media outlets had to have a response from us. And it is the job of the public relations officer to respond to those questions and to give input from this council in representing the interests of this town. And that is what Mr. Avery has done.
He does that every month?
He does that every month, yes.
May I have the floor?
There's a motion on the floor.
May I have the floor?
Yes, councillor. Councillor.
I was having a committee meeting on Wednesday. Wednesday passed, yesterday. I found out that the information had been given to Mr. Avery and Mr. Avery had passed it on to John and somehow or another, it got on the website incorrectly. So I was told that there was no committee meeting last night, that it was for the 22nd, which is why I was not there. This has been going on for months, confusing, where I'm sitting in a, in a committee meeting and people aren't there because they don't even know the meeting is going on. The same with councillor Brooks was there. And people don't even know because the information is being put on the website or in the newsletter incorrectly. Now, maybe Mr. Avery has done a good job previously. First of all, he has no business doing the newsletter. He has no business on the website. And I don't know why you feel he should be paid for these things. And at this point, it's too many cooks in the kitchen.
Okay.
I would like to.
Thank you, thank you.
Just a moment, I want, I want to respond to councillor Johnson with regards to that. And I, then I'm going to ask councillor Jones Waters to make a, to share what she has. As you're well aware, Mr. Avery is not a webmaster. Mr. Avery is not a webmaster. Mr. Avery works with, what is John's last name, the gentleman?
So we have.
And the borough manager.
We have people that has access to our website and we don't even know that they are.
Councillor.
We're paying people that we don't even know.
The last webmaster.
Just a moment, Mr. Dodson will give you the name of the people who are responsible.
His name is, his name, he's from Amsterdam, his name is John Drewit.
Jan Derouter.
John Drewit, thank you ma'am, thank you ma'am, thank you.
We never voted to hire him either.
That's the person who puts the stuff on YouTube.
And we didn't hire him to do anything.
You didn't answer me when I asked, who was Jan Derouter? When we first started this.
Please, no speaking from the audience.
Not from the audience.
No speaking from the audience. We're trying to move the meeting along.
Okay. For clarification, Mr. Avery is not the webmaster. He coordinates with the videographer, he coordinates with this gentleman. Mr. Do-, yes, with the borough manager. He coordinates with myself, with any of the councillors here. He coordinates.
He never coordinated with me.
And if, and if he's never coordinated with you, you have an open invitation to coordinate with him. The fact of the matter is, that's not, that is not laid at his feet. When, when Mr.
Derouter?
No. When Gary Corr left, no longer doing the newsletter, was responsible for doing the newsletter under contract. When he left, Mr. Avery stepped in to get those newsletters out. The newsletter, I agree with councillor Roe Cloud that nothing has been done with regards to Black History Month because they are not, information has not been provided to them to do that, to update the website.
But anything involving your town hall is on the website. Everything that involves you is on the website.
Councillor, please. As a matter of fact, we have been interviewing, myself, Mr. Dodson, have been interviewing councillor Johnson, three vendors who can take care of our website, our social media sites at, at the highest, at the highest professional level as a webmaster. You will have that information, was it sent, Mr. Dodson? That, that information will be provided to every councillor for your review.
Point of order, point of order, we're talking about Joel Avery.
So that, so that, so your questions with regard, any, any further questions? I call councillor Jones Waters.
I have really lost my chain of thought. One of the things, though, I was echoing.
You have to take, you have to take off your mask because we can't hear you.
One of the, the things that I was going to say, what you mentioned.
Hold your mic closer.
You mentioned it, Sharon, as far as council president, as far as Joel Avery not being a webmaster. He is not the webmaster. I think what the other council members seem to have a problem with is the part of, I guess, the, the display of, of the disruptions.
Councillor Roe Cloud can speak for herself.
Of the disruptions. And so that did not begin with Mr. Joel Avery, that began with Gary Corr. But in saying all of that, you guys make it seem like that this man is taking charge of everything. He's collaborating with the, with the borough manager. So, no, 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 your borough manager has to get it right. The borough manager has to get it right. No, 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 he has to get it right. It's the borough manager, he's in charge.
Let's take the vote, please.
Okay.
There is a motion on the floor.
There is a motion for councillor Brooks, councillor Brooks as the floor.
I just want to say a few things about Joel Avery. I did get the opportunity to speak with him quite often. And what I appreciate about him, I don't know how much he should be getting paid, but what I do appreciate about him is because when all the propaganda, the lies and rhetoric that's going on about myself and other council members, he straightened it out. He was telling the truth. He put the facts out about myself. And, well, you can say what you want to say, but I'm telling you and I respect him for what he have done for me. I'm not saying that he shouldn't be fired. I'm not saying that he should stay here. What I'm saying that I've seen the work that he have done. I know that everybody could have talked to him and I have, I have said in the past, call him, have you ever talked to him? No, well, you should call him, nobody calls you.
Why is the borough paying for that? That should be something you should pay for.
Pardon me?
You want somebody to speak for you, you pay him. And, and.
Why are we paying the borough for that?
There's a motion on the floor.
And to be, and to be quite honest, and I appreciate what she just said, councillor Brooks, but here's my concern as well. I'm glad he was able to come to your defense, but he didn't come to my defense.
He came to the town's defense.
When the borough decided to put me on a website, on a website, on the website where he decided that I should be singled out and misrepresented on the borough's website. So Joel Avery was working for Sharon Council and whatever she wanted. And we need to stop funneling him $4,500 every month to do nothing. He's not helping this community at all. Enough is enough.
And enough was.
$4,500 is constantly being funneled to him. He issues the same identical invoices every single month. He does not do $4,500 worth of work, period. Counselor. You have everything he has, right? It sound like he came to the aid of everybody else except for a few. So I don't want to pay him with my tax dollars, period.
I also want to ask, Bob, is it a contract or is it an agreement? And what's the difference?
It's an agreement, it's not a contract.
It's not a contract.
It's not a contract, it's an agreement.
I have the agreement right here.
Ask the solicitor, Mr. Bob, would you please explain what it is, please?
An agreement.
Okay, so, and in, in legal terms, a contract has certain elements to it. It has consideration, it has acceptance, it has terms, it's a very specific legal thing. In Pennsylvania, everyone is at will. When there is something put into writing that falls short of a legal contract, that could be, you know, called an agreement, you can call it whatever you want.
Well, and a contract.
It's a, it's a promise, it's a hope, it's, it, but it's normally, what Mr. Avery has, there are really no, there's no terms, there's no, there's, there's nothing in it about what happens if either party wants to terminate it. So if either party, if Mr. Avery decided to walk away, there's nothing we could do about that. If, if we decide to get rid of him, there's nothing Mr. Avery can do about it. There's, what's written down is, is a hope that this relationship would go on for two years.
Now, 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 just now. Now. Okay, hold on a minute. Okay.
It ends, the end of the year.
It ends today.
The, the. The motion is on the floor. The point of order.
The written document that I signed for Mr. Avery, he has every right to test the law on that agreement. Let him test it. And so, and so, Mr. Bob.
Mr. Bob, that's why Mr. Bob is here. That's why we got a lawyer.
That's right, let him test it. If you ask the question for the, if you ask the question about the contract for hiring. Excuse me.
It's not a contract.
Please don't answer from, please don't answer from the floor.
Mr. Bob said it was not a contract.
He's taking her out.
And I, it's point of order, let's really back in.
And I'm going to make this, this final comment. Every vendor, every person that works for this, for this town, Every vendor, every person that works for this town that we have voted to appoint.
She trying hard.
From Mr. Nichols, we appointed him. Mr. Dodson.
The point of order. We're talking about Mr. Avery.
And I have the floor.
Point of order.
I have the floor.
We're talking about Mr. Avery. Why are you bringing in all the other vendors and contractors?
And I'm going to make reference to, we do not have...
Because you're belaboring the point. Let's get to the vote.
Okay.
You're belaboring the point.
We will get to the point.
Let's get to the vote, please.
Mr. Bob's and Mr. Munch's office does not have, quote, unquote, "a contract." We can decide to tell the current solicitor, "We no longer need your services."
You're trying to intimidate... You're trying to intimidate. That's what you're doing. You're trying to intimidate the other contractors and/or vendors.
Counselor.
That's intimidation. That's an intimidation tactic.
Counselor, you're out of order.
No, you're out of order. Hold for the vote.
There is a motion on the floor.
The motion on the floor is my... It is my concern that we will have another lawsuit. Anybody can sue us.
That's not the motion.
Anybody can sue us.
That's not the motion.
If they believe they're being wronged by this town.
Madam President, you have stated your case. You have stated what you wanted, and every counselor here can vote their conscience.
Okay. But I also want to say, I want to say to you, Council President, what I want to say to you is that...
You hear some of the counselors want to let Joe Avery go, and you hear some of the residents want Joe Avery to go. These are their dollars. And that's... It's time to do... It's time to work with the community. It's time to work with the community and work with the community.
The community wouldn't want taxes.
Thank you.
And the majority of the council raised the taxes.
Call for the vote.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Call for the vote.
So if we listen to the constituents, the constituents didn't want to raise the taxes.
There's a motion on the floor.
No, no, they wanted the taxes raised. Oh, yes, they did. Some of them did. Some of them didn't. They didn't care.
Most of them did not.
Order. Order, please. There's a motion on the floor.
Why are we talking about that? Well, guess what? I stand on my boot.
Counselors, there's a motion on the floor. Counselors, there's a motion on the floor.
Call for the vote. They trying hard to keep Joe Avery. They don't want to let it go. I really want to know what's going on with Joe Avery. I need to know what's happening.
I'm going to call for a 10-minute recess. 10-minute recess. 10-minute recess. To chambers, 10-minute recess.
No.
10-minute recess.
No. There's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor.
The motion is on the floor.
There's a motion for recess. Do we have a...
No. No.
We need to take this vote.
No.
We are going to recess if we want to talk about it.
No. No. Is there a motion to recess? Is there a motion on the floor to recess? Mr. Bob just said he needs a motion on the floor.
If... It doesn't make any sense if only two people are going to go back to their...
Yeah, but that's not a...
No. No. We cutting that gravy train. That's even more reason why.
Why is it any different than anything we vote on? You going to take a recess? You don't want to vote a certain way?
But you see, that's even more...
Hang on. Hang on.
We need to get rid of him.
Let's make sure... Let's stop. Stop. Let's make sure that everyone knows, because this is what the 10 minutes would be. Let's make sure everybody knows that if we fire Mr. Avery, there is a possibility that he sues us.
Okay, good.
Let him sue.
All right. Let him sue. Let him sue.
Chief rather paying him.
Please, no talking from the audience.
All of the counselors know before they vote that if they vote to fire him, he could sue us.
Do what you have to do.
Do what you... And not only that...
There's a motion on the floor.
I have a copy of the agreement. And nothing in the agreement has anything to do with a contract. I have a copy.
And that's a...
Well, it's not a contract. It's an agreement. It's an agreement. It's an agreement.
And there's no terms in there saying if he went right. Exactly.
There's nothing in there.
They're trying hard. They're trying hard.
I'm not recessing. You do what you have to do. I'm not going back there because I already know.
I'm not either. And I'm going to put on my research cap. I'm going to get down to the bottom of this. Get down to the bottom of this. I am going to get down to the bottom of this.
I'm exhausted. This is just exhausting.
It is draining.
It's draining. Because it shouldn't have to be...
This difficult.
Take the vote. You vote the way you want to vote. I'll vote the way... It's not that deep. Just vote.
No, we're not tabling it. We're not tabling it.
We're not tabling it.
No, we ain't tabling it. No, we cutting the fat tonight. We cutting the fat.
Motion to table.
This is crazy.
There's been a motion to table, and it's been seconded. Can we...
No. No.
All right. Who's voting to table?
Who's voting to table?
I... I just want to get it tabled.
Raise your hand if you're voting to table.
It's only two.
That doesn't make it...
Motion failed.
Motion failed.
Motion failed.
So now we can take the vote.
Now, get the break of motion going.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor.
All the pay...
We can still pay it.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's an amended motion on the floor to remove Mr. Avery. And so that motion has not been completed. We've had a bit of discussion about it. I am very much concerned that we will have another lawsuit.
And that's fine, Madam President.
It's not fine.
That's your concern. That's not the rest of our concern.
But you cannot not...
It is never fine.
That's right.
Excuse me.
You're trying to hinder us from taking the motion.
Excuse me, Counselor.
No, you're trying to hinder us. We need to vote on the motion.
It is never fine to put this borough in a position to be sued and have to hire... And have to... Counselor.
Point of order. The motion is on the floor.
Counselor, it is still...
The motion is on the floor. Your intimidation tactics is not going to work.
It's not working.
It's not going to work.
There is a motion on the floor.
Take the vote.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Yes.
So that we are all clear.
The motion reads, determination...
To amend...
I didn't...
No. Wait.
There's no amend. The motion reads, determination of Mr. Joel Avery. That's the motion.
The motion is to terminate the services of Joel Avery.
He's going to terminate. Lorraine. I need you.
Oh, you hear that? She quit pro quo. She said, "If you terminate..." She said, "If you terminate Avery, Dotson's next." That's what she just said. That's what she just said. You see what I'm talking about? See what I'm talking about?
All right. Let's reel this in. Let's take the vote.
Lorraine, you heard her. You heard her, right? You heard her. You see what I'm talking about, people? Oh, I'm telling it all. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we going to take that vote. You done overstepped your bounds. Let's get the vote. Let's get the vote popping. Call the roll. Call the roll.
Stop talking about each other.
Call the roll.
Counselor President, what is your pleasure? Counselor Regent... Excuse me, Lorraine Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Jones Waters.
No.
Counselor Roedkla.
Yes, in English, in C, in Espanol.
Counselor Brooks.
I recuse my vote.
What'd you do?
Recused.
You abstained?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay. Counselor Beatty.
Absolutely yes.
The vote is three, yes, two, no, and one abstention.
The motion fails.
Thank you.
No, the motion...
Motion failed.
The motion passed.
No, the motion failed.
The motion...
It's not even about the...
You have the abstention as a no vote.
It's three, two. Three, two is an abstention. And you're not...
No, it ain't even about the...
It's three, two is an abstention. So it's three, one, two, three, two.
It's staying votes like a little...
Oh, my God. It's like a tie.
Just don't count the votes.
It's a three. So is it a tie? No, it's three, two. Well, then the motion passed. The motion passed. Mr. Bob, it was three, two and one abstention.
It's not rocket science. Three, two, the motion passed.
The motion passed.
The motion passed. Oh, thank you.
Nothing to debate. Yeah, it's three, two. The motion passes with one abstention.
Yeah, it's three, two. So what's the... What's the problem?
I can't give that advice.
The problem is...
You don't... You try to...
Some people didn't like the vote of the chief. We had to go with that because that's legal.
What we're looking... What we're debating here tonight is whether an abstention vote is considered a no vote according to the Borough Code or according to Robert's rules.
No.
So he is reviewing that now. Thank you.
So continue with the agenda until...
Abstentions do not count in tallying the vote negatively or positively.
Thank you.
Three, two. And who is on that? She knew. She just tried to tell me she is. She knows.
I think she can change.
Sure. Just describes a quorum. What happens is a... So... You have, and then you have to count a quorum.
Can you say... I'm sorry. I can't do it.
There's nothing to do.
I got a quickness.
We will.
It's right there.
Very good.
Okay. Of course she does.
And she said it on the floor. See, that's why I said the intimidation. The intimidation. We got it on camera. Everything's on camera, intimidation. You said that she votes... She said that if she voted against Joel Avery, then Dotson is getting fired. That's what Counselor Jones Waters said.
The words are...
It did. I guess we are all witnesses. We're all witnesses here.
My conversation... You heard me. I said my conversation was for you, not her.
Well, you said it out loud.
Consideration...
But you should have kept that... No. 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 No.
Consideration for the accounts payable list may have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded for consideration to pay the accounts payable list for February.
I have questions.
I have questions.
Okay.
We have an addendum for Mr. McGool. I spoke with her today. And I motion that be tabled to be... And she's looking forward to having.
Mr. McGool needs to be tabled.
Who made the motion for the AP list?
I seconded.
But who made it?
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Brooks, I was right. And...
Thank you, Ms. McGool.
I'm talking to Ms. McGool.
I spoke with her. In reference to the $600 payment.
But why were you speaking to a counselor?
Because I'm a councilwoman, and I can speak with whomever I want, Madam President.
But Counselor, Counselor, Mr. Dodson...
Something is wrong with the $600 payment. We have to look down here, I... So she was...
You did not.
Maybe we can bring it down.
That's not your authority, Counselor Johnson.
You don't have no business hiring anyone.
No, that woman was hired to do that event.
Before that event even happened.
That woman was hired. You shouldn't have did whatever you said. Whatever you said that you were doing. Whatever you said you were doing.
Oh, see, the truth comes out.
She have to address all, no, no, you have to address all your comments to Madam President. You cannot talk across the aisle. All questions need to be directed at the Council President.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Mr. Dotson.
That woman deserves all her money.
Well, um, Counselor, uh, Johnson, I believe you want to make a motion to, uh, amend approval of the accounts payable list to exclude the six hundred dollar payment, uh, to.
Ms. McGool.
Ms. McGool?
Yes.
I seconded that motion.
Is on your addendum, is an addendum on your desk, please?
Yeah, I have it.
Can you pass that to, to Madam Counsel, please?
Are there any further questions? Here are not all in favor, which indicate by raising your hand.
I'm in favor.
Yes. Those opposed?
John Burks.
Those opposed?
Two, somebody's not voting.
Counselor Brooks, are you voting?
Uh, Madam President, may I ask for a point of clarity, point of clarity, please, on this emotion to amend? Who made the motion, please?
Counselor Johnson, please, let's make it.
And then the second was Ro- was Counselor Roclaw. Thank you for, thank you. There is a motion on the floor to amend the AP list to exclude Ms. McGool and her six dolla- six hundred dollar payment. If I'm not saying her name correctly, please excuse me. That's the motion that's now on the floor. Are we doing a, uh, name or raising?
Raise your hand.
Well, what was it? It's the motion?
To amend the accounts payable list to exclude the six hundred dollar payment.
Madam President, I think you asked them to raise their hand. I didn't see the vote. Can you ask again, please? Can you ask?
Yes. All in favor, raise your hand, please.
One, two, three.
Uh, those opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention.
One, two. Who abstained?
Uh, Counselor Brooks abstained.
And.
Counselor, uh.
Roclaw.
I sent it to table, Counsel, Madam President and Counselor Dunblin's vote, not to table, and Counsel.
One abstention.
They maybe did the work. Well, she don't like that.
Um, are there any other, with regards to the account business, are there any other observations?
Yes, I, I have some observations. I see here that, I'm just a little confused. So I see here for the chief swearing in, um, you are, um, asking for reimbursement for two hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents. Tamika Jones Waters, a hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-four cents. And so I'm just a little unclear as to what that is about. I see Pamela Thornton, I guess, a hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Was this all for, like, food or something? Did everybody chip in to buy food? And if this was a borough event, why didn't the borough just take care of it, order the food, so people didn't have to come out of their pockets?
It would have been too expensive.
So I can answer the multicultural event. As it relates to the multicultural event, um, much more money was spent. It was my donation, all of the food products. Um, however, we had to pay for supplies. So a lot of the supplies, that's what the supplies and stuff went to.
What are supplies? What supplies?
What supplies? If you want to look at the invoice, you can get the invoice.
Hey, Counselor Jones Waters, her reimbursement is for two events. That's not one event. That's for two separate events.
What two events?
The multicultural event and this one. So that, I, I just, you know, why it's one night, it's not for one event, it's for two separate.
A lot of, a lot of, um, you know, for that event, I donated a lot.
So, you know, what really, what really upsets me is when I'm asking how these tax dollars are being spent, and I get smart remarks like, oh, just supplies, like the taxpayers don't deserve an answer. Something as simple as plates, cups, napkins, that would have been sufficient.
Supplies.
She has no respect.
Event supplies.
Tax dollars.
Please adjust, please adjust the chair. Please adjust the chair.
I'm moving on to my next concern. My next concern, I hear, um, uh, Mr. Giomarco, uh, expenses for a physical exam. So I'm a little confused. Um, excuse my ignorance, but I just assumed, like, maybe insurance would take care of this? Medical insurance or something? I don't know, do.
And Mr. Fox, I always tell a solicitor to tell him to shut up because I don't want to violate anything.
Mm-hmm.
But. That's, that's an employment matter. He, he was directed by, by a borough official to do that, and that's what he did.
Okay, okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
All right. Um, and, and my next question, and this is for Mr. Anthony Scott, and I appreciate your, the, the work you do. But for twenty-six hundred dollars, is that for one meeting, two meetings, three meetings? I'm confused. Two thousand six hundred dollars.
Uh, Mr. Nichols could you address that?
That was actually for, uh, three meetings in the month of January and the chief's swearing-in ceremony as well.
All of it's.
So four total events. And there was the credit that was owed back to the borough of the one hundred and fifty dollars from prior month.
Right. Okay.
And you reduce, cut the rate for the swearing-in ceremony.
Well, that's not an issue. I'm just worried about the twenty-six hundred dollars, that's all. Um, another concern is this, this doggy service, this animal control service. One thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for the month? I mean, what kind of animals is running around here?
So, uh, that work out again, I'm sure that's actually for the month of December and January. Collectively, they picked up three animals over that two-month period.
Wow.
The, uh, Mr. Fattman, the animal control, that's, they don't pick up dogs, that work out animal control. So the other gentleman, he picked up two dogs, and each dog cost two hundred and fifty dollars.
And so that, that contract should be canceled.
So let me ask this. So are any of these dogs that's be- that are being picked up, are they being claimed by their owners? Because if they're being claimed, then I think these calls should filter over to the owner.
I want to put you on, Lieutenant, but I, I don't know that answer. That is fine. But when, once he picks the dogs up, we, we watch our hands. Um, that's something I, wouldn't I talk a little about and provide that information to the borough? And then, you know, the boroughs, the boroughs will.
Right, yeah, because it, it, it's quite pricey. It's quite pricey.
Actually, he was, kind of, was the only agent there, um, that did it two years ago, I guess.
Okay.
Or that.
Yeah.
We, we used to have a system on.
I, I know, I know. Okay, but if that's something that you could have a conversation with, um, Dean Fattman, about, because I'm sure if someone lost their, like, little shih-tzu and Dean came and picked them up, the owner's going to go and get the shih-tzu, right?
I can, I can tell you from just knowing him, he's not going to be the one that's going to build, uh, the owner. He's going to, he's going to build.
Right, but that's why we should have something in place where if the owner picks the dog up after he picks them up, that he keeps a running list and give it to us. And then we should be able to go after the owner, because we shouldn't have to pay for that. You know, it's too expensive. So thank you. Um, okay, we already discussed Joel Avery, so this'll be his last check. The, um, our legal expenses for the month, it looks like total fifteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Oh, that's a lot. That's a lot. That's a lot. And, um, I think that is about it. That's about it.
Okay, so we're calling for the vote. Um, all in favor, which indicate by raising your hand. Which indicate by raising your hand to approve the accounts payable list to pay the bills. Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Uh, for the consideration for the cash balance report for January. Are there any questions? May I have a motion, please?
No.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly second. Are there any questions?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, here are not all in favor, which indicate by raising your hand. Those opposed? Are there new business, Mr. Dotson? Are there any new business?
Um, hold on, let me, let me just get this. No. No, ma'am.
Oh, thank you.
Come on.
Uh, the minutes for December fifth, twenty twenty-two workshop meeting minutes.
Excuse me, before you move on, aren't we supposed to hire a couple of people?
It's down at the bottom here. If you look at, uh, President's Report, number eight. Managers' Report, excuse me, Managers', number nine.
Okay, I see, thank you.
Uh, December fifth, twenty twenty-two workshop meeting minutes. Are there any, uh, corrections, additions, or deletions? For the, well, for the following, uh, approval of minutes for December fifth, fifteen, December twentieth, December twenty-eighth, January third, January ninth, and legislative minutes, we don't have those yet, so that G should be held up, because those aren't completed. Through the. Yes, A through F. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes for A through F? Here are none. All in favor to approval of these minutes, which indicate by raising your hand. The minutes, indicate by raising your hand. For the minutes.
Okay, for the dates, this thing.
Yeah, A through, A through F. Okay. Pardon me. I know, but that's. That's, that's a type of, that's a type.
What was your vote, sir?
Uh, they were all approved, yes. Uh-huh, okay. Uh, motion carries. The engineer's report is completed. Uh, the President's Report, just a couple of observations. We are glad to have, uh, confirmed for the month of January. Our new chief took office, and he is, uh, well on his way. Some of the interesting, uh, ambitions he has for the department is certifications. I think the mayor may have some input with regards to that. Certifications of officers in various training, uh, modules. We're looking forward to a very successful twenty twenty-three, uh, for the Borough of Yaton. We're really very delighted to come out of twenty twenty-two uh, and looking, having great expectations for this year. Uh, I want to commend our engineer, who has worked diligently to get approval to date of over four million dollars in grants that reflect work within our, uh, within our borough and also a, a determination to, uh, apply for the various grants that are available, uh, for a new recreation facility for the Borough of Yaton. Uh, three other communities that are, that have taken advantage of the, um, uh, of the stimulus funds and built, in, in the process of building their recreation centers, Brookhaven, Ashton, and, um, uh, what is it? Upadharby, is, is that Upadharby, Count, uh, Mr. Nichols? That are building new recreation centers for, for places for their families to meet, to congregate, to share, uh, for exercise, for, for, for physical health. Uh, we are, we're, we need to do that for our borough here. Many of you are, are aware of when our theater building was demolished. Uh, that vacant lot has been there for more than fifteen years, just sitting there. Uh, pardon me, over twenty, the mayor is correcting me. Uh, the Yaton Swim Club, there was a segregated swim club that became the, uh, impetus for the Nile Swim Club development nearly a hundred years ago. Uh, that, that land that is owned by the Borough of Yaton is still laying dormant. Uh, we have had the studies, the Saul studies, the, the location for, for that facility and for, uh, areas in our community park that we can begin now, working together, to pull together the type of support among counselors here and you in the audience and our residents, uh, at large to come behind this effort to build a new recreation center for the Borough of Yaton. Uh, I am very, very enthusiastic about that because we have one of the best engineering firms on the eastern seaboard to, to be, to lead us in the development of funds and the development of that type of facility. So we just invite you to support that, uh, with all deliberate, deliberate support. Uh, the other thing is, as you have mentioned here tonight, that our website needs redevelopment. The website needs reengineering. It needs to be totally, totally brought up to standard and up to date, as well as our social media platforms for the town. We are in the process of reviewing, uh, competent, uh, webmaster, uh, uh, folks that can really do it right, and so that you don't have to be embarrassed to tell anybody to look at, uh, look it up on our website, because we want it to be a state, a, a top-notch, top, um.
It should have never been dismantled.
It's, well, that's another question. But we want to have the best website to represent our community and to, uh, represent us here in the Borough of Yaton. Uh, so that, those are a couple of things. The other thing I want to, I am reminded of in this Black History Month, that it has taken many, many, many of our forerunners, that we're standing on the shoulders of many African-American, in particular, shoulders that allow us to sit in this chamber today. And I want to extend my gratitude to many of you here tonight uh, for allowing us to have a peaceable and respectful, uh, exchange in doing the business of this town. Uh, we thank you for your, for your presence, for you being here. Uh, we don't always agree, and we won't always vote the same way. And, and that's okay, too, as long as we can pay the bills and people aren't getting up, walking out. So we appreciate that. Uh, I want to, uh, thank the mayor for all of his support and his support for the new chief of police. Uh, you know, it's just, it's, it's important that we have unity in this community for building a better community. Now, I want to mention an important event that's going to happen on the twenty-first. Uh, we have, we have come together with a local, um, head of our Democratic Committee, Penny Florence McDonald, came to me and she said, we need to bring people together. We have a lot of people that, uh, that really aren't interested in coming out to council meetings, that aren't interested in participating because of the rancor and things that have happened in twenty twenty-two. We're moving away from that today. And so on the twenty-first, she has invited, uh, people from the sheriff's office, from COSA, from our senior services. They're going to be here. There'll be light refreshments, but there's going to be a symposium here in the borough, on the second floor, on the twenty-first. We welcome all of our, uh, all of you. We welcome our community to come out and get questions answered about certain services that are available to them, our senior, our aging population, uh, and many of you, questions about what is happening with, in our borough, uh, particularly the William Penn School District's ribbon cutting for renovations of Curf Field. All of those, uh, persons, uh, that will be here, will be here for you to answer those questions. We want to establish a stronger community, to build a better community than what we've ever seen. And so that is, uh, that summarizes my report, uh, to you tonight. Uh, now for.
Uh, Counselor, I have a question about the symposium.
Yes.
So, um, you said the Yaton Democratic Committee will be hosting a symposium?
It's a, it's a, it's a co-host. Uh, we're co-sponsoring it. I am involved in the process, uh.
You personally?
No, as representing my position on this council. As president of council. It's similar to a town hall, but it's a symposium. It's, it's designed to partner, to have other people, uh, coming to answer questions for the ref- for the benefit of the residents of Yaton Borough. That is the purpose.
Well, I would think, um, the entire council would.
You are certainly.
I would think, but when I, when I saw the, um, the flyer that you distributed, it, you just have, uh, Penny McDonald as YDC Chair as the host and yourself as the host. So it gives me the impression that this is something personal for you. So if that is the case, i- i- am I correct when I say that the borough will not be spending any monies whatsoever for this symposium?
Counselor.
No, I'm just asking about.
Counselor, there's no money being spent by the, by the town.
You said light, you said light refreshments.
Yes.
So who's paying for the refreshments? Who's paying for the space? Who's renting the space?
The space is not being rented, Counselor, and, and, and.
So it's being.
Ms. McDonald will be providing the refreshment.
So the space is being rented for free?
It is not rented at all, Counselor.
So it's being allowed to be utilized by an organization for free? That's what you're telling me?
It's a community event, Counselor.
Because I'm gonna tell you what else is confusing me, that you are the treasurer for the YDC. So you're the treasurer for the YDC, the same organization that wants to bring a symposium to the borough, and you're using your authority as a councilperson to provide them the space and possibly the refreshments. That's a conflict all day, and that's a problem. That's been a problem, and it's not right, it's not fair.
Counsel.
It's not right. And like you said, your name is on it, it's just you. If any monies have to be spent for refreshments and rental of that hall space, it should come from your pockets directly, not the taxpayers.
Counselor, you happen to be entitled to your opinion, but you are incorrect. You are wrong.
I don't want my tax dollars utilized for this.
But Counselor, you can speak against unity all day long. That's your prerogative.
And, and in addition, I am hard pressed that you want unity in this borough, especially since you still have on the website the disruptions and the outbursts and this and that, that's targeting not only myself but other counselors as well, in addition to the mayor. So you can have whoever access the website to put on your flyers for the symposium, your flyers for the, the town hall, your flyer for the multicultural event, but you did not at any point in time instruct that person to remove that negativity. So I find it very hard pressed. The next thing is the rec center. I would love to have a rec center, but we simply cannot sustain a rec center. Let's start with maybe a supermarket? Bringing something of value to this community that we can walk to and actually buy food that's going to help every. we can walk to and actually buy food that's going to help everyone in the community? So we don't even have a plan as to how we're going to sustain a rec center. We have nothing in writing, we haven't discussed it. This is your baby, your baby alone, and you're doing it because this is what you want. And again, playing with people's tax dollars. As far as the COVID funds are concerned, Mr. Nichols, this is for you.
Yeah, before you move to that-
When are we going to-
Before you move-
When are we going to receive the outline for the grants for the residents? Well, you spoke upon it, you spoke upon it, Counselor Harris, you spoke upon it.
No, I am going to speak again. When you make references to the rec center, you may not have been a resident in this borough for the past 35 years.
I don't need to be. I don't need to be.
And counselor, counselor, I'm not-
I don't need to be.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I don't need to be.
Excuse me. For the past 15 years that I've served off and on this council, that has been a desire for the residents of this community to have a rec center. You may not be aware of that and that's okay. There is a definite, definite support for a recreation facility in this town, as it is for a sit-down restaurant where you can have a cup of coffee, as it is for a supermarket that was closed in the Baghdad Shopping Mall some 20 years ago. There's a deed restriction there in that mall that keeps you from putting another grocery store there. You may not be aware of that.
Address it then.
Excuse me, and I have addressed it.
Since you know about it, fix it.
Excuse me, counselor, I'll tell you how we addressed it. In 2014, we organized a redevelopment authority for the Borough of Yaden that gives it the power of, 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 what is that domain?
Eminem.
Eminem domain, that you, that the borough can purchase at market value any property within this borough that given market value to, for the taking of that property and establishing it for municipal purpose. We have not been able to do that because of the infighting in a council and the reelection process that every two years you get a new counselor and that person has to be brought up to speed about what the goals of the town is. And before you can get anything done, those people are voted out and a new group comes in. The unity in the community speaks to the fact that you get people who act like adults and make decisions for the town that are in the interest of the town and not in their personal interest or their political disagreements. That is the problem here in Yaden and has been for many, many years. So as you talk about not having a rec center and wanting a supermarket, I agree that you need a supermarket and you need to have qualified lawyers that will get the job done for you. And so there are things that has to happen here, but the fighting and the things that you referenced about having councilors on tape that are constantly screaming and disrupting and not following any decorum as an embarrassment to this town and to anybody that looks at it. So yes, I agree that if you're going to be dignified, dignified and respecting this house, those pictures should come off. Those reels should come off of the website and a new website that invites people to love, work, and play here. And until that happens, you'll keep having this total turn where nothing ever gets done in this town. And when you're opposing someone like Mr. Avery, a journalist, who wants to put, who wants to put the town, who wants to put the town in a good, in a good view, you oppose him. Why? Because he works for the town and because we selected him on a four-person majority. So you don't talk about any of this outside of this chamber. You don't talk about it in executive session. You don't share what you think would be a good thing to do for the town that relates to hiring, that relates to retaining people.
That's not true.
Excuse me.
That's not true, counselor.
When you come, when you come to these meetings-
Get off that high horse and slide.
It is about, excuse me, it is about who's on, who's on this side and who's on that side.
You shouldn't be on the side of what's right.
And so, and so unless you are prepared to make the decision to work together, for me to hear your ideas and you to hear mine, and stop casting blame that's unfounded, when you're ready to do that, we can move forward. You have people here, we, we make 200 bucks a month to come here for the aggravation.
And the power.
For the aggravation, sir, for the aggravation. And so, and so-
Point, point of order, point of order, point of order.
This is what you want.
Let's reel it back in.
You asked the question and I gave you the answer. Thank you.
Reel it back in.
Madam President.
I said, I spoke about sustainability for a rec center. That means money. How are we going to pay for a rec center?
Point of correction, Mr. Dotson.
In the conversation previously, you stated that our properties have had soil samples, since the meeting is being recorded, we have had no soil samples of any of our properties. Two of our properties have feasibility studies, the movie theater does not, and all the movie theater that does have is an assessment. So since the, since the meeting is being recorded, I just want both council and the public to realize that these are the things that have taken place with our three available properties.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Dotson.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
The consideration, I'm gonna jump to the consideration for the new zoning ordinance. Mr. Boggs, could you explain that, please?
So most of the solicitor's report was done in executive session, but the one thing that I do need from council tonight is in preparation for our March 16th legislative meeting, I would like a motion to advertise a amendment to our zoning ordinance law. Council has asked me to look into adjusting our zoning ordinances so that it properly will, we have be able to address methadone clinics, illicit substances sales in the future, anything having to do with things, you know, substances that are currently illegal or currently quasi-illegal, becoming legal, suboxin, methadone, these, these types of-
Psychiatric.
Yep, psychiatric medication, there are-
Psychiatric medicine.
Yeah, there's, sure. There's, I mean, anything that is currently controlled may not be controlled one day and may be used in, in therapy, in these therapy sessions. And we're not allowed to exclude these buildings from our town completely per the Supreme Court, but we can zone them where we would like them. So I'm going to take a look at our zoning ordinances and make some amendments to clearly zone these types of businesses in the industrial part of our town. And also, I'm going to work with Mr. Dotson, we're going to check out the, the square footage in our industrial zone and make sure that if limitations need to be put on, on space, that we do that as well, but just that we update our zoning ordinance to adjust for the current time and for the time in the, in the near, in the near future. So if I could just have a motion to-
So moved.
Advertise.
Second.
Great.
Can you finish the motion?
That's great.
So, well, I have a question. So you said psychiatric medicine, so how would that affect the pharmacies?
No, 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 no. So what I mean by anything having to do, that, that's currently controlled, psychedelics, Xanax, Percocet, opioids, anything that's currently controlled, ecstasy, there, there's, there are plans mainly with methadone and suboxin at the moment, to have clinics that use these substances in therapy. So one of, one of the, in, in England, they're using MDMA, which is ecstasy, in, in therapy sessions. So that could happen one day here. What's happening now is methadone. And that's what, what council has been most concerned about is that if one of these places wants to come to Yaden, that we, we avoid the, the issue that we had with Restore and we clearly zone these buildings for our industrial park.
Okay.
So it doesn't affect all pharmacies.
So you're really referencing, you're referencing products that are illegal that may become legal?
And some are quasi-legal, like methadone is quasi-legal. You can't have that without a prescription, you have to be in, you know, a doctor in therapy.
No, it's just when you said psychiatric medicine.
I could have used a better word.
Right, okay.
Because psychiatrists can give out Xanax.
Right.
That's not affected, but if, if a therapy session, if, if a methadone clinic also wants to give out those substances.
Okay.
If, there's a different type of-
All right, I just wanted to be clear.
Absolutely.
Is this going to include recreational marijuana?
Yes.
Smoke shops?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor.
And this is, this is to finish, this is just to advertise, my plan is to, two weeks before the legislative meeting, have the draft to council, we'll then advertise it seven days prior per the law, and we'll have copies available of the ordinance here at Borough Hall for the public's inspection.
All in favor, which indicate by raising your hand. All right, the, the vote is unanimous, the motion carries. I do need a recessment because we didn't discuss in the executive session the selection, the, the review of the five persons who sent letters of interest for the civil service appointment. We'd like to make that appointment tonight. And I've spoken to the mayor about that, so if we could recess for 10 minutes, for those of you that have reviewed, council members, that have reviewed those letters of interest and applications, we can talk about that in executive session for 10 minutes, just to get, so we can put a motion on the floor as to who's going to fill that, fill that one vacancy and we'll give you the details about that after this recess. Recession for 10 minutes, please. In the matter of considering an appointment to the Civil Service Commission, we have discussed it thoroughly, the five people of interest that have indicated an interest in serving. I'm going to ask for a motion for, in two categories. The first motion will identify a person who has indicated an interest in provided resumes and what have you. We're going to vote that, not only that personally, and to fill the vacancy for the Civil Service Commission. We will also discuss with that appointed, with that appointment, how, what that particular vacancy involves. You may or may not be aware that there is a two-year, four-year, and six-year rotation on the Civil Service Commission. So the person that we select here, he will be, that person will be filling the unexpired vacancy and we'll give you that detail. Mr. Nichols, is he still here? Okay, Mr. Nichols is not here. Okay, so, he has, he has a breakdown, we'll discuss that after the vote. Also, we're going to select tonight two alternates for the Civil Service Commission. Those alternates will be called upon in the event that an officer is, is not able to, to carry out their function or be absent or whatever the case may be. The Civil Service Commission has not convened in the past two years, a year and a half prior to, to now. So it is important that the instructions, as it relates to this commission, a very important commission, because it, it serves not only to go through the process of selecting police officers, but they're in charge of ordering tests, they're in charge of advocacy where officers have a grievance, they, they represent that officer's interest. It's a very, it's established by the state statute and it is, it is a very important position for any town. And as we are in need of, of searching and securing police officers, both full-time, part-timers are not subject to the Civil Service Commission, but any part-timer that is hired or currently working for the borough can progress and become a full-time officer. So in that intersection, the Civil Service Commission is extremely important. So we are, are gonna call for the vote, the nomination for the candidate to fill the vacancy for the Civil Service Commission for the Borough of Yaden. What is your pleasure, counselor? I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael Trent to the Civil Service Commission.
So moved. It's been moved and properly second for Mr. Michael Trent to be selected to fulfill the vacancy for the Civil Service Commission. All in favor, which indicate by raising your hand. The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. For the alternates, I would like to entertain a motion to appoint Counselor Loren Johnson to serve as an alternate for the Civil Service Commission. May I have a second?
You can have a motion. You can have a call.
And Alicia Simmons.
She's asking.
And Alicia Simmons.
And Alicia Simmons as alternates for the Civil Service Commission.
Okay. So moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Are there any questions? She gave the second. All in favor, which you, all in favor, which you indicate by raising your-
Do you gotta say who?
We can't do it separately.
Did I second? No, that's together.
The solicitor says yes. Okay. Should I make the motion?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor, which indicate by raising your hand. The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. And now for the mayor's report. Okay.
Yeah, we have it soon, soon.
Mayor, you're on.
Oh, great. Mine won't be, thank you, Madam President. Mine won't be long. Just want to bring to your attention that our next mayor's forum will be on Thursday, March 2nd, in the second floor auditorium. All are welcome to attend. We will, again, be giving out a raffle, prizes and giveaways. We do have, when you come to my house, we feed you. It'll be 7 o'clock, all right?
Put it on the website.
Please, yeah, let, let's put that on the website because it hasn't been, yeah. All right. Police staffing, we, the borough did hire Chief Henry Giermarkov, have been meeting with him and he's been meeting with the, his staff to get acclimated. He would be at these meetings, he was predisposed tonight, but he will be traditionally coming to these meetings as the previous chiefs have, have done before. So we, I'll, my report stands as submitted, I'm not going to go over everything. We, we still have the memorandum of agreement between us and Upper Darby so that they hold, should we have prisoners, they'll hold the prisoners for us until all those factors have been addressed. We do have the new police chief, but we, we do need to be up to full staffing or adequate staffing and, and, and then all the various investigations underway needs to be resolved. That is it for my report.
No, thank you, mayor. Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. I will ask council for a motion, consideration of hiring Mr. Javon Jalal as a full-time public works employee.
So moved. It's been moved and properly second, are there any questions? Here and now, all in favor, which indicate by raising your hand. Those opposed? One abstained.
Who?
You didn't abstain?
No.
Oh, you're going for, oh, okay. Oh, you're going for, oh, okay.
So that's unanimous?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to ask council, please, for consideration to promote Mr. Ricardo Maxi to the Public Works Foreman.
I move to table.
Second.
Second to the first move. Second to the first motion.
Motion to promote, seconded. Motion to table, seconded. So we got to do the table first. Any questions about the table?
Why are we tabling?
So I.
It's a personnel matter, so you can't go into too much detail.
For me, it's about seniority.
May I be recognized?
Yes, counselor.
This is ridiculous. We cannot, we absolutely cannot bring our personal feelings into the livelihood of these employees. I don't care if you like someone more or someone less. If this man deserves the promotion, give him the promotion. Enough of this. He does what he's supposed to do, he comes with his credentials, he goes above and beyond. And for one person to hold up this man's livelihood is ridiculous, and it's a shame. That man knows what's going on, and he comes to work still every day and perform his job despite knowing that he's being held up because someone has a personal vendetta against him. And it's not right. Enough is enough.
There's no personal vendetta.
Enough is enough.
There's no personal vendetta against anyone.
Okay, counselor.
There's no personal vendetta against anyone.
Excuse me, counselor. There's a stand, a standing tradition in this borough. In my 37 years I've been here, two offered, two employees of this borough that have worked side by side for over 25 years were just, one was just promoted to superintendent.
Based on seniority.
Hold on, hold on, counselor, counselor, counselor. Counselor, counselor, please, please. I'm not referring to, excuse me, counselor, excuse me, counselor. Please, counselor, don't answer.
You know what?
Counselor! Counselor! I'm speaking of tradition, I'm speaking of those persons who have lived here, who have worked here for years and takes this borough. Excuse me, counselor, I don't want any, counselor, you're a former counselor, I always call you counselor, but you are a resident, and if you could just keep it, keep your comment, comment to yourself. I'm simply, I'm simply for the benefit of Counselor Roadcloud, who says that she thinks it's some type of personal thing. It's not personal.
It is personal.
The person has been.
It's not just about seniority, it's about, you have to, you have to factor in credentials, expertise. And performance. Credentials, expertise, and performance. Credentials, expertise, and performance. You just don't promote someone based on seniority alone.
Let's just go through the table vote, and if that fails, we'll go through a regular.
No, we, we need to give him due justice tonight. Tonight, do justice tonight.
Any other questions to discuss? We have to do the table first.
There's a motion on the floor to table, to table the promotion of Mr. Ricardo Maxi. That's the motion, please, Madam President.
I'm simply saying, for clarification purposes only.
They're calling for the vote.
The person has been employed less than three years.
Calling for the vote. Point of order, call for the vote.
And, and there. There are other, there are other persons.
It's a shame, it's a shame.
There are other persons in that highway department that have, have a high level of dedication to whether whoever is sitting up on this council.
Point of order, call for the vote.
Counselor.
Mr. Bows.
I am the chair.
Well, I'm calling a point of order. I'm calling a point of order.
I'm going to finish my statement, counselor.
Please finish.
Thank you.
Between you and Talia.
Counselor, counselor, I'm going to finish my.
Disgraceful.
You're disgraceful.
So that, so that, so that this discussion has been going on for over two months.
Playing with people livelihoods.
And there is still.
Why do you talk about playing with people livelihoods? He ain't even get the money yet, what are you talking about? And they all make decent money, so what are you talking about?
Who's she talking about?
I'm talking to you. You're disgraceful. You're disgraceful.
It's gotta be. Okay. So I, so I, I don't think it's a, it's a situation that has been resolved among, among counselors, and it should be, it should be more deliberation about it, so that.
No, this one too much.
No, more than too much.
We don't need any more deliberation.
Take the vote, take the vote. Please repeat the motion, so everybody's clear.
This is a motion to table the promotion.
All right, come on, this is a vote.
Call, please.
All right, call for the vote to table. Everyone in favor of tabling it, would you please indicate by raising your hand? Well, the motion failed. Those opposed? Yes. So the motion failed. All right, now we need to vote, not even.
It's three.
Okay. All right. So now for the motion to promote Mr. Maxi. All in favor indicate by raising your hand.
To Public Works Foreman.
Public Works Foreman.
I abstain. Due to the seniority.
What abstain?
Lack of seniority.
Okay, all right.
Congratulations, Mr. Maxi.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Maxi.
We have to get the tax collector.
Yes, the tax collector's report.
Finally.
No. Okay, so, for our tax collector report, Ms. Hughes. Thank you, thank you for your report.
Can, can we take the microphone too?
Bring the mic to you. So you don't have to come over here.
Good evening, everyone. This is my first formal report to the council for this year. I want to first report that the 2023 bills have gone out. So if you have not received your bill, you need to call the office and make sure that I get it to you, because some bills have been returned for different reasons. I want to remind our taxpayers that there are no cash payments, and there are no partial payments. The office, if, okay, I should have told you that. There was problems in getting the online payments our program set up, but it should be resolved, and people should be able to make their payments online if they want to by the end of the month. The 2022 delinquent real estate bills have been submitted to the tax claim bureau. I do not know who is collecting the delinquent bills for sewer and trash, since Portonoff is not supposed to be doing it now, is that my understanding?
Portonoff, yeah. Give the name, give the name.
Okay, well, somebody.
Yeah, there is a new, there is a new contractor, there is a new contractor for delinquent sewer.
Okay. Well, okay, just so that we know, we need to get those collected, so I'll, I'll check again with Mr. Nichols. Now, I want to report the, since the bills went out on the first, we have collected money. And today, we have collected $6,941.90 for real estate taxes, $16,800 for trash, and $22,752.10 for sewer, total being $101,494.00. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as for the. At our workshop meeting, we had several summaries of reports from the department heads, finance, ordinances, ordinance in zoning, public works, public safety, the police department's report. The fire department did not make a report, they were not present. Emergency management was taken care of by our borough manager. And so, the only, the only report that we are lacking is the fire department's report. But I'd like to have a motion to accept those reports summaries as presented in the workshop earlier this, earlier this month. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly second to accept the head of department reports as provided in our workshop meeting of Jan, of January, no, February, I'm sorry, first Monday. So, all in favor which indicate by raising your hand? Those opposed? Okay. One opposed, she opposed. Okay, the motion carries. Again, on the recreation, any old business. Okay, hearing non, citizens' forum for non-agenda items.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I make a statement, please?
Yes.
Just so all the residents know, Code, Public Works, and Recreation will be meeting the Wednesday, immediately prior to the council meeting. You have to be careful, because I can't say the third Wednesday, because of the way they come in, it could be the, the third, the second Wednesday. So it's the night before the council meeting, starting March 16th.
At 6:00?
At 6:00 o'clock.
Can I ask you a question, please? When you meet the third Wednesday, will that give you, and whoever is meeting time enough to prepare a report to come to the floor, come from the floor?
That's going to come from the workshop.
That's why you should have your meeting before.
It is before the council meeting. Are you saying now before the workshop?
It should be before the workshop, so that we can engage, and you guys can do a report from the floor at legislator.
That would mean, if I'm not mistaken, we have our workshop on the first Monday.
Yeah, and you can have the meeting on the second Tuesday, the, I mean, the first Tuesday, the, you know, that same first week, if possible.
Would you be willing to do that on the first Wednesday of the month?
If you're going to, if you, if you want to go with that plan, why, why don't you do the last Wednesday of the month is the committee meeting, then the first Monday of the next month is the workshop.
That makes a lot of sense.
So do the last Wednesday.
The last Wednesday of the month, okay.
Well, that's how it was before. That's when ours were.
But it was, it was that way, it was the fourth Wednesday of the month, I think.
Yeah.
But this is going to now be the fifth Wednesday of the month, and it's going to be off sometimes.
As long as it's the last one.
Just the last one.
Yeah, just make it not the fourth or the third, just the last.
Because some months are going to have four weeks, some are going to have five. So we'll just do the last Wednesday.
That's what it was before the rest.
All right, are there any other residents, excuse me?
We're not going to have any other meetings this month. We'll start it with the fourth Wednesday in March, okay? The last, I'm sorry, the last Wednesday. The, now, don't say the fourth, because sometimes it's the fourth Wednesday, sometimes it's the fifth. So the last Wednesday of every month.
So that will be at the legislator?
Yes, but it'll be for the next.
Yes, but it will be before the workshop, for the next month.
Okay, okay. The only, the only omission here tonight was any reports from the library, from Yaden Public Library, or the school district, Mr. Dotson, with the Lee ASI. Yes, you did have. So the manager's report, okay?
I would report that we attended the groundbreaking, our counselor, Vice President Johnson, President Sharon Council Harris, the state senator was there, Mr. Williams, our state rep was there, Ms. McClinton, our former state rep, Ms. Curry. If you look in the newspaper, you'll see a number of dignitaries with white hats and gloves breaking ground on the new stadium that's coming this spring. Also, I attended an education meeting with the school board, and we also attended a meeting for, a general meeting for the school board as well. So we are very involved in the school board, the decisions that they're making for our borough, and our borough should be very proud, if you don't mind me saying, in the fact that that new stadium will bring, not only resources, but will bring hopefully better students, or, or good students, not that we don't have good students, but more students to the Wayman Penn School District. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Are there any residents wishing to speak on any, any items? Would you come forward, please? At a non-agenda.
Good evening. I have my usual request, Zoom access for residents that cannot attend. A lot of people don't come because they have obligations to family, or they can't drive at night, or other issues, and I have requested every time I come, can we have Zoom access? And I've been told that residents don't want to come because of the bad climate here, but that's not true. We need the Zoom access, we have a Zoom account, we're paying for it, and I don't know why we can't have it. My other concern was, at the last workshop meeting, and the previous one, Madam President said that those reports from the various departments would be put on the website. So people who can't come, I'd like to know, how can they get the information? The police report, the engineer report, all the handouts that we have here, the AP reports. I don't think it's fair that if you can't come in person, you can't get it, and you did promise that you would put it on the website, and it's not there. And my final question is, what's going on with the Church Lane and Chester Avenue project? Haven't gotten any information about that. If there's any meetings, I'd like to know when I'm going to lose my view of the park, when that apartment goes up. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
I just want to thank Loren and Carlet for engagement with the community with your committee meetings. But the question that I have is, there's a safety meeting too, no one said when that meeting was going to take place, so that the community could engage. I don't know if I should be addressing this to Hepkins or to Jones Waters, but any one of you can answer.
So the meeting is still the same, as far as the, the fourth Wednesday. Mayor Hepkins.
You changed it to Saturday.
No, I don't know what you're talking about Saturday. Mr. Hepkins, or Mayor Hepkins, you want to collaborate with me to get something situated?
Yeah, you never did it, but you said on the floor.
All right, please, please.
I'll, I'll be happy to take it forth, I was doing it, when, when you took it over, I wasn't, I, I could do it.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll do it. Then I would make it, I would change it back to Saturday mornings.
I can't do Saturday, Wednesday. I can't do Saturday. Wednesday works better for me.
Wednesday, what time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock on a Saturday?
Wednesday. The same day, the same.
What Wednesday of the month?
The last Wednesday.
Okay. All right. At here?
It's always been the same.
And here?
It's always been the same downstairs.
All right, so, so then we'll make it the... Okay, before you answer, just want to establish, it'll be the, the fourth, the fourth Wednesday of every month?
The last Wednesday.
Or the last Wednesday. Okay, whatever the last Wednesday is of every month. The last Wednesday, yeah.
It's the fourth Wednesday.
You wanted the fourth Wednesday.
It's always been. Thank you.
What time?
Seven? No, six, six.
That's a conflict. It was like that before. She has two committees, you have two committees. They don't know how to...
Same day?
Well, I'm explaining to you, you're talking about my committee meetings. So I'm explaining to you that one committee meeting is after the other. So public safety will be first, and the Community Affairs Committee will be next.
Yeah, Counselor, Mayor, could you clarify?
I'll meet with you. We'll, we'll talk about it. All right, and then we'll, we'll release it to the public.
Appreciate that.
So you have, you have one meeting at six, the next meeting is at seven.
He wants to stay after for the, if they come to the public safety, they wanna remain there to hear what I have to say about community affairs. That's fine. But that's how...
I said safety. I didn't say community affairs.
We'll, we'll talk about it, and we'll, we'll, we'll release it.
So, yeah, the mayor, get back to your Counsel, Mrs. Johnson.
It's apparent that there are four Counselors on the floor that want to silence residents in their constitutional right to have a voice in how their taxpayers' dollars are spent. If this is not a fact, put your petty differences aside, put your petty differences aside for the dislike of each other on council. Vote Sharon out. Put someone else in that seat that truly cares about the well-being of Yaden. It can be anyone, as long as they can bring Yaden forward. I won't say what's on this paper, but we do need to get out of that asshole.
I can imagine what you meant.
Okay. If there's no other business for the town...
I have one last report from the Yaden Public Library.
Okay, Counsel.
Storyteller Faith Basama is an author, illustrator, musician, and artist. She came once in November, once in December, and is now scheduled to come twice a month for preschool, and once a month for kindergarten. Also, the Nauvoo Swim Club scheduled an event to discuss Tuskegee Airmen for February 18th at 11:00 through 2:00. They have a full roster of events happening in February, including our very own Ms. Sandra Brown Wright, Sandra Brown Wright, reading to the preschoolers on February, but that was yesterday, 15th. Let's see, I think it's one other thing.
Tomorrow's matinee.
Okay, tomorrow, they have a matinee. Okay. And Joanna McClinton's mobile, mobile office has decided to be in the library every Thursday from, from 10:00 through 1:00. That's it.
I want to, I want to recognize a former council president, present in the House tonight, Ms. Denise Stinson. Could you wave at us? Welcome, welcome. Great to see you in the audience there. Mr. Green, you close us out, and then there's the adjournment.
I'm not gonna get mad. I just want, there's a young man, he's a great young man, his name is Oscar. He works for the Public Works. Instead of having somebody from the outside coming in that is fully qualified electrician, he needs to go to Pico. Right now, let's give us, let's give Oscar a chance to step up to the plate in Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Green. This meeting is adjourned.